And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright guys, the first items we'll need to call to order the additional appropriation hearing. This is for the police departments, eight hundred radios. Y'all have had a chance to take a look at the proposal, the cost, so on and so forth. Does anybody have any questions or comments about what's on the quote there? I just had one, Todd, was there a reason of the Kenwood versus Motorola or?
The Kenwoods were cheaper and a better route to go. The one bid that was in the four thousand something was a dual band for BHF and eight hundred. The one that we took was the regular, just eight hundreds.
Okay. And is, who's able to program, is it Techlectronics, they're gonna, they can do the programming and all that stuff? Anybody have any questions, comments, or anything about that proposal? Alright, if there's no comments or questions, just need to call for an adjournment from the public hearing on the additional appropriation.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Alright, I'll call to order the regular town meeting. Excuse me. If everybody's had a chance, you've had your packet, everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. If there's no additions or corrections, we'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
One second.
All in favor? Alright, Todd, you got anything on your over first or?
Um, John announced his retirement. And his last day will be in March. I haven't got it all figured out yet, but he wants to work until this is the first day to take his days. Our new vehicle's on the road. I got the GPS in it, just a couple of days after it was finished. So it's up and running. And that's about it.
Perfect.
So John is actually down in March, but he won't work next year, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Alright, Jim, what do you got?
Alright, I've just got a report for runs we've had. Up to date. Listed through August. A free run from November to end of October, and we've had a hundred and thirty-six totals so far. They got broke down by also the townships, where they've been and the ones in town, as far as what we actually had.
About average compared to like the past years, is that up, down, in between?
But too much to go, because last year we hit two hundred runs. So we're averaging anywhere from twelve to fifteen, so we're probably gonna be down, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
You know, we, in the past, we've had a lot of medic assists. Unless they, you know, need help, they're pretty well handled them, and those are pretty well down too. I mean, as far, because I think we had three in the townships and only had one in town this last month.
Jim, I got any, anything for Jim?
Thanks, sir.
Matt, you got four. Or do you want to speak on that later, or you want to go now?
No, the only thing I see that's not on Jim, I talked to him once about, was I wanted to bring up, was about the trees. I didn't know if you guys, I didn't, didn't know if you guys had a chance to look at the tree list that we gave before? Is that something you're gonna discuss later then?
If, if it's, it's not on the agenda, but we tabled it, I went around and looked at what you had. I'm a hundred percent good with everything. I think it's a good, good starting point for sure. I don't know where everybody else is at, but I think it's, it's someplace we need to get started on for sure. Because there's, there's some other, need attention quick.
Yep.
I don't think, we don't need motion for averages.
Are we gonna discuss them or not, or?
No, we, I mean, we've discussed whatever. I'm just saying that, that's why I said I went through and I looked at them, so if you have other comments or?
Yeah, I had some that, like, well, one in particular. Two sixteen East Seminare, I mean, it looks scrappy, it's not dead. Like it had a couple dead limbs sticking out or something. Maybe, probably, I probably got two-thirds of them, I said, go ahead and cut, but is there a reason we're not doing a trimming program, or?
That's a few guys, the way the ordinance reads. I'm just going, I'm just going, because when I was approached in that meeting at night, it was about the dead trees. I, I mean, we've really not discussed this prior meetings or anything. It's the starting point. So this is what I'm just, that's where I'm just getting started at.
How far onto a property do we have authority, or is it anything within the corporation limits?
I think the way the ordinance reads, there's no, there's no rhyme or reason whether we can't go on somebody's property as long as it shows that it's an unsafe tree. Then we can, we can justify that we, you know, they have to take care of it. If they don't, then the town takes it and it goes on to their property tax. Now, that's the way the ordinance reads, I don't, I don't have my book with me tonight to, to say that, but that's, that's where they were at.
Those people we would notify and say, hey, this is, you got an extra on the days.
They are notified, they are given thirty days. Now, we will work with them, they say if we, they've contacted somebody, but they can't get here for, you know, sixty days. We'll work with people. But it's those who basically don't respond, don't work with us, that if they don't, then we'll go and have to.
Just like the yards or?
Just like the yards.
Or whatever else.
Yeah.
And Ross, I'm not picking anybody in particular, I just went around and started something because we've never really started anything, so I didn't know. Like I said, I haven't even gotten near the list, I haven't went to the west side or anything to look.
I mean, with your, with your list, if we just, if you, if everybody's good, we can just pare that down. Having to start with the ones, because I, like I said, I, the ones I looked at, all of them had dead in it. And what scares me is just like the one that was just up the street from?
My mom's.
Me and your mom, is, you know, that thing, it was alive, but it had some big dead stuff hanging out, and it just came crashing down one day, and I'm like, I'm just over that. So that's the only reason why I don't have a problem with any of, any of those, but, I mean, we could start if you wanted to.
But it's just my, I mean, this is a five-person board, isn't it?
What's, what's, anybody else, anybody else have any comments, look, went around, looked at them, or?
I went around, looked at them, of course, I mean, they're all out by the street, the sidewalk, and that creates a safety concern, obviously. The ones that has some dead stuff in it, I really don't know, I'm on the fence about, about that, because I don't want to cost people money, right? So I tried to think of which is more important, money or the safety. But the ones that need to totally come down, there was quite a few I have on here that I think totally need to come down. And I actually added one, which is two oh two East Line Street, which is actually, the tree is, is it Line Street the rest of there, on top of mine?
Yes.
It's actually on Line Street, but it's, it needs to come down.
You say what, two oh two is on?
Two oh two. Yeah, there's two trees, every one of them is pretty rotted. But, yeah, I, I'm not sure on the, the ones that have the dead stuff in it, I really don't know. Two oh seven East High Street, it does have a big gigantic broken limb that's, that's stuck in it, it probably does need to come out.
Yeah.
But like I said, I don't want to just cost people.
Did you make a, did you make a list yourself there, of, of yes, no's, or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Ross has got one, Jerry, did you or Derek make?
I did not. I didn't make a list, but I, I think they all, I don't know if we can ward the the notification in such a way as to take care of the question of whether it's a trim or it's a total cut down.
That's how our policy reads, that it'll begin to have the dead stuff in it.
Matt, would you, what do you guys think? If, if we let Matt have maybe, and if you guys don't care, maybe Matt could take Ross's and Derek's list and prioritize the ones that, if they both agree that they need to come down, let's, let's kind of prioritize one through, I forget how many's on the list.
Right, wherever.
One through whatever, we can get those folks notified first, and then, then kind of work through the, the ones that are not completely dead and just have some, some bad spots in them. Would you guys be good with that, think that'd be a, a way to start?
I think, but most orphaned ones, when they're completely dead, are.
Or maybe not completely dead, but at least it's obvious that they're.
There's a lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
Because obviously, they're no good, the tree's dead, they're not providing any type of shade to the customer or the residents. And you're always at the possibility of limbs falling out of it.
Would you be good with that?
I don't, yeah.
So we'd basically be looking, I want to make sure I understand, we'll prioritize them, but then part of the list will be the ones that will be removed totally, and then a letter will also be sent to trim up the dead stuff?
Yeah, I think that.
Is the way I understand, you got to want to be then on some of these trees?
Yeah, I think, I think let's start like that and see where we're at, and, and kind of go from that. These will be, you know, the ones on the list that they both agree on and.
Sure.
Make those high priorities, and we'll kind of go at that angle.
Yeah.
Is the board good with that, everybody good?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay. So that's what we're planning on doing with that. Alright, uh, let's see, we got the department heads done, we don't have any ordinances on reading, that takes us to resolutions. We've got twenty twenty-five eleven, which is the additional appropriation for the police radios. You guys again had it in your packet, we've already discussed it. Does anybody have any comments, questions? If not, we just need a motion on whether to move forward with resolution twenty twenty-five eleven, which is the additional appropriation of fifteen thousand three hundred for the radios.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five eleven.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know, I gotta work with you sometimes, this body's right there, so you wanna go ahead and ask. Just working with you.
Sometimes I need it.
Okay, the next resolution we have is twenty twenty-five dash twelve, that's the resolution for an additional appropriation of eight thousand one hundred and two dollars ninety-eight cents to be able to repair a, which, which truck is it?
Six two.
Six two. And it's got some issue with, what, just real quick, what, maybe I was not at meeting, what was wrong with it?
What's that?
What's wrong with that truck?
Uh, nothing now, but it's had a, I'm trying to think what it was, it was actually losing antifreeze through the motor, because it wasn't leaking. It's, it was a cooler, I can't remember what the name of it was, but it's been fixed.
Okay.
Backing service, it was out for about a week, I think.
Okay. Alright, so this is an additional appropriation to cover that, eight thousand one hundred and two ninety-eight. Need a motion to approve or move forward with that one?
Six two township truck.
Yeah.
It's your additional preparations actually, eighty-one oh three, because we have to round up.
Oh, okay, eighty-one oh three.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see that, my, my mistake, sorry. Ross, did you say, was that you?
No, I was just pointing out that it was eighty-one oh three, about the same time Melissa said.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Second?
Is that Jerry?
Yes.
All in favor?
Third line, right?
Third line. And you are a fast burner.
It's not what I was.
Okay, next resolution we have before the board, twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. This is an addition to our, I don't know if I call it an addition, it's more of a.
Modification.
Modification, yeah. To the employee handbook that will handle some emergency closures of Melissa's office. You know, we've had some issues, we had the power outage. Really? We had the power outage, and then we had, was it a bad snow or something?
The first year we had a bad snow, but we didn't, we couldn't even have our first meeting.
Yeah.
Of the year, so, and they're having to use their PTO.
Yeah, so this, this.
We called them off.
So I'll, I'll let Melissa explain if you guys have any more questions to this.
We've been, we've been discussing this actually for the last several meetings, so I think it's not a surprise. So this is basically the, um, basically the, as of up here, and then I think, and the guys have already talked about this from the last couple of meetings, so there's no surprises here.
Okay. Questions or comments, if not? Motion's on this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
Second?
All in favor? Alright, and the last resolution we have, twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. This is a resolution to modify, excuse me, our internal control policies for Melissa and the, the girls in the office so when they move down here to the new building, how cash and/or receipts are handled, where they're stored, and so on and so forth. I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that or not.
And so that, the office that's down here in that front corner is now our cash office, the safe, that houses checks, that houses cash, houses our, our minutes, everything will be in that room now. And it will be, the only access to that room will be through myself and the three-year-olds. No one else will have access to this building, to that room. So that helps with our internal control policy, that state board of accounts will be looking at at our next audit.
Perfect. Questions, comments? Alright.
There's a safe down in that room.
We have a safe down.
Alright, motion on that?
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, modification of cash receipts, internal control policy.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And while that's being passed down, I was watching the video in preparation of the minutes for the meeting for this evening, and there were some questions I know that people have regarding Mike Scott's bid for this. He'll key fob system, he is currently in the building, so we don't have to bid it out. If we wanted to get new equipment, it would all have to be bid out. The only thing that's being changed is we are moving some key fobs to different rooms that were already in place here, but they have to be moved, so, such as the, the key fobs for access to cash office and also the new, will be the new interrogation room. Only, like, police officers will have access to that. There was a question on how much money, quote unquote, for training. So I will have to be trained on how to use the system, because I will be the one doing all the key fobs as well as granting permissions on who has access to what. So I know that was a question, so I thought I would address that, since this is, the internal controls policy is kind of in effect with that as well.
One thing, one question I had is, all of the key fobs that are, the swipes are gonna be for interior doors, correct?
And exteriors.
So that, that's what I was gonna ask, because I didn't remember seeing that on there. So all of our exterior doors will be, will be fobbed, right?
Entrance doors, because there's, the one that's over there by the basement, I'm not key fobbing that, that will always remain locked.
But the main entrance.
But the ma, all the main entrances will be key fobbed.
Okay, perfect. Alright, takes us to miscellaneous business pool construction.
Yes.
Sorry?
I was in here and asked about getting the roads closed for ninety days over there next to the library. And we talked about, you said that was fine, but if it was over thirty, or over that ninety days, did I should come back? And I'm back, because I need one more month. Omara is starting the eighth on the upper end, doing the approaches to get into the library, and then they're moving all that dirt down through the south. And on the south side of the library, we're finishing laying brick, and we've got all of our stonework in there. And then Omara's gotta come in and put sidewalks and curbs along that side. I'm shooting for October first to be able to landscape everything, which that thirty-day window should get me out of that road, but I know they're coming down through, they're gonna have to come down through there and take out some curbs and put in sidewalks and do their final grade, and that's kind of the way the site's working right now. So I'm asking for another thirty days, and we should be really, really close. Close enough that if it went a couple of days over, unless you want me to come back in and ask again, that's what I'm saying.
Matt, do you have any concerns?
I don't, I don't think so, I mean, they've got all their stuff set up, and I, I mean, it's already there.
Yeah.
The main thing is I want to get with them before they leave, because we're gonna have to address that road.
Yeah.
That tree will have to be addressed, about getting resurfaced, some, at least something put over top after having all that on there like it is, so, yeah, that'd be the main thing.
Any comments from the board, concerns? Is everybody good with it? So, everybody's good? Yeah. Yeah, I, I would say, as long as, you know, and, and if we want to go ahead and address that, I, I would say, well, we could give maybe a, a two-day leeway, you know, if, if it's, if it's not done by October first, and you think you're gonna be a couple more days, we don't need to see you, but if, if it's gonna be longer than.
Yeah, I mean, if it's gonna stretch, if it's gonna go a lot further than that, I'll come back in immediately, but like I say, we really want to plant the bushes and the shrubs in October, so that we know we've got a good fall plan and probably everything.
Okay. Can we say if he's not done by the third, come in on the sixth?
That's, that'd be perfect, Ross, yeah.
So if I'm not done by the third, call, get on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, thank you, I might be appreciated.
Your hat, not your hat.
I would remember as soon as I got out there, went along and got a film back.
Alright, twenty twenty-six budget, I'm assuming Melissa wants to cover a couple things.
So we actually have just this meeting and the next meeting to talk about the budget, I have to advertise it ten days before our October, I believe, the sixth meeting, so it doesn't give us a lot of time. I, I've made some changes, as I put in your packets the last time. When I initially met with our D L G F representative on how it's constructed as of right now, he said it would pass the D L G F's requirements. The only thing I did change, and you guys have it now, is I had told all of you that the county was considering an increase in the local income tax. I felt that they would go public safety, they're not going public safety, they're going edit. They're gonna increase their edits. So that will be, I believe, when I talked to Dennis, they, it would be around a two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar a year increase in the edit funds. And this is what everybody is doing because.
For county or for us?
For us. So with that, I did talk to Baker Tilly to check. The edit fund can be used for any, what they call any lawful purpose. And so in checking with them, I did move, I've moved the dispatcher salaries out of the public safety Lloyd to give us a little bit more play and revenue there, and moved it to edit, which I am allowed to do. So that's, what you're seeing there is the move of the, our portion of the dispatcher salaries to the edit fund. So I don't know what you're hearing from other communities such. I've been reading that these impacts are gonna be massive. I know the city of Bloomington is having to cut, I think, like five million dollars, I read today. Carmel is cutting ten million out of their budgets. I talked to the county auditors, yeah, last week, or the week before last, and they were like, the vendors who are coming in and changing all the assessment software for all of this, they said they think the impacts will be worse than what, what we're being told. So the way I look at budget is, this is a, this, I'm, I'm happy with it the way it is right now, with all the unknowns. We can, you know, as, you know, twenty twenty-six progresses, we can make modifications to the budget through either the additional appropriation process or the reduction process, because not only can you add, but you can also reduce your budgets. So I think as it stands right now, like I said, the budget's gonna be a crapshoot. Until we, actually, to me, we really won't know what's gonna happen, at least through, until we get our first tax disbursement in June of next year, to see where the impacts are really gonna be. So I think, like I said, I think this, this budget is, is good. We've got some play in here a little bit, but you're gonna see where all these communities now are gonna start moving more of their expenses to these LITs structured, like the edit, the Lloyd. There's some other different LITs that are available to other communities that we aren't, we don't participate in, but everything's gonna be starting to move to these other funds. And this is what's happening, actually, right now, so like county's doing it right now, and that will be coming to effect on January first, twenty twenty-six.
And the, and the nice part about, I mean, it's, it's scary for, for all of us, but I think the nice part about is, is, is the budgets that we have worked through for the last.
Twenty sixteen.
How, how many years we've been here?
Just twenty sixteen.
You know, we've been able to stay with that same, almost that same dollar amount. And so we, we know what we're gonna spend, you know, minus any catastrophes or whatever.
We tend to do that budget a little bit differently than everybody else. Most of these communities will budget up to what they know is their, their, their max. They know what's their max. We have never done that. We have always been very conservative in our approach, only go ask for what we think we need, and then if we, for instance, you know, like the radios, hey, we didn't budget that, but we're gonna need them, we'll go get an additional appropriation. We have all, we have never, ever come close to spending all of our budget. We usually put back, what, maybe a hundred, between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars a year. So we have a nice nest egg, I think, I like the way we do this approach. Go get what we need, stay conservative on the budget side, so.
And we've still been able to, to upgrade all of the department stuff, you know, we've got Matt's stuff, you know, everything else, so it's not like you guys are stagnant, so, you know, we're still able to, to, to spend that money, spend it wisely, and that's, that all falls on you guys, that's spending that money wisely and not just blowing that, so. And that's that all falls on you guys that's spending that money wisely and not just blowing that, so.
And as I I've talked to, I talked to Matt regarding, because I know he's got some, and Todd's got a car request. And Matt's got some street curbs and a dump truck request going in there for next year. I was advised by the D L G F, he and I talked quite a bit, that we do these after the first year. Don't put them in budget yet. Wait to see everybody, where every fund ends up and do it as an additional appropriation at the beginning of the year. Or also, you could also wait till we see, get our first installment in June and see where the money's come, you know, how much money are we getting? Because like I said, we don't know. So that was his observance and opinion as he and I talked a while back.
I personally am not worried about our budget. Concerned, yes. Worried, no. I think we're, I think we're good.
I think we're good.
I honestly think that we're good. So, that being said, does anybody on the board have any comments about any of the budget items, line items that you've read through in the packet that you wanna discuss tonight, ask Melissa about? Because again, as she said, we've gotta make a decision and have it ready to go by the last meeting in October. All good?
Have the department had seen the budget?
Yeah, they actually were participating. They're the ones that built their budgets.
Yeah, and that's typically what what happens every year is, you know, we go and say, you know, and most of them, you know, will look at what I spent last year, go back and see, did I spend that budget? If I did, and then that's what I want. I don't think, there was maybe a couple of line items that was increased, but there was very few other than major purchases that we were talking about.
And as I told, budget is, like I said, I've told you guys, it's a crap shoot. So for instance, it's like I was trying to explain it to Todd. You know, like last year, they wanted the the uniforms, the.
Class A's.
Class A's. So we built a bigger budget last year for the purchase of class A's. Well, not everybody's gonna need class A's this year, so we kind of reduced that part of it. Then you can also take what we reduced in class A's, because, you know, then move that to ammunition. Because you know, you know, or to supplies, because he knows he might need some more supplies. So you just fluctuate the appropriation numbers as the budget goes.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, we will move on. Matt and Melissa, you guys wanna talk about the cameras at the street garage? Which one of you wants to discuss that?
Well, I got three estimates for cameras down the street garage. For you guys to look at, I've got three different companies to come down and look. We're looking at putting seven cameras up. We're gonna put two of them facing to the south, two to the north, one on that end driveway as they come in. And then I'm gonna put one in the big shop with the overhead door where we work quite a bit. And then I'm gonna put one in our shop that faces where we park our trucks where the meeting was. With discussing, I discussed that with all three of the people that looked at it. They all felt like we had plenty, that would give us plenty of coverage. Because the ones that would be outside, we'd be able to pick up obviously everybody coming in driveway. But then we would also be able to pick up anybody coming in the door, the front door, just out the door, that north door. So that's kind of where I was at with the seven, the seven cameras. I did have them price it as a sixteen channel. So if we ever wanted to upgrade or we needed to upgrade, because I would like to eventually, we talked about finishing that other four bays down there. That way we could put more cameras in and wouldn't lock ourselves up to just eight. That does come with the monitor. If you looked at everything, that would be them installing and the whole nine yards. So I just feel like now that, you know, we need, we need to get some cameras down there ourselves.
So I I have a couple of questions and maybe I missed it and didn't see it or whatever. But has, was there discussion about, are these wired? Or are they wireless cameras and is it gonna be?
I think they're running wire all the way down through all of them. They're all gonna be wired up. They were wanting to know about access to the overhead. And then there will be access to, all three companies said we would have access to an app to where myself, Melissa, you, Dylan, whoever would do, you could see that camera if we wanted to.
Live action.
Yes, we could see that or go back and roll through.
Perfect.
That's why we went with the thirty two inch monitor because it will record. I didn't go into like real great detail like how many days of storage it has and all that, but it does have the storage on it.
Most of them will have thirty days and that's something that we probably need to write into the handbook or whatever is how many days we wanna keep storage in case something happens.
Is that like a two terabyte system?
That's what I believe it is, yeah, Ross. Yeah.
And then the other question that I had is, and I'm assuming this is a Melissa question. Has anybody talked to our insurance to find out? Because I know a lot of times when you have and you're able to camera some of your good, you know, the high end equipment, that it will reduce premiums.
I have no idea.
Okay. I'd like to maybe throw that out there when you get five minutes. I'm just saying that, you know, that that's a possibility that it may, they may be able to do something on a premium. Yeah, just just a question anyway. Okay, sounds good. Do you need anything else on that?
The only thing I will have to do, because I don't wanna take water, any more money out of water and sewer, because water got hit really hard this year with some stuff in sewer. We had to replace that whole part that's that hillside with the stormwater issue that we had. And I don't have enough money appropriated for equipment out of the N V H. However, as I talked to Matt, we have a lot of money set aside for streets and curbs. We are not gonna get curbs done this year. There's, he's been in contact with all kinds of people and we can't get people to even come and bid curb, curb work. So we will have money left that we aren't using as a part of that, that was part of the N V H appropriation for the budget this year. We can do what I call an out of category budget transfer to pay for the cameras on that money that was supposed to be for the curbs, because there was no way we're getting that done this year.
What was the cost on it, Matt? Sorry.
On the cameras?
Yeah.
The one I was looking at was Robinson Communications for forty three hundred dollars, forty three hundred, sixteen dollars and fifty one cents. Curb work we had set aside, I believe, was like seventy five thousand and change.
And new equipment we have left on the N V H side is one thousand four eighty four. And in the curbs and paving appropriation, I have seventy one, seventy five thousand dollars.
And the only thing I do wanna quote, just to make sure, I'd like to save as much of that on that new equipment because I gotta get some new rubbers for our snowplops for this year. We have not replaced those in the last three years, so they're needing to be replaced. So I'm gonna have to buy some new backs for the blades.
Because most of, because most of the paving, like I think we're what, at one twenty, one hundred and twenty one thousand?
Hundred and twenty one thousand.
So seventy three thousand of that, I believe, will come out of the special distribution.
Yes, yes.
Which I wanna get that, that fund's been sitting dormant, so let's just get rid of that.
We'll take care of it.
So that'll leave us fifty thousand dollars to pay out of this appropriation here. So that gets still, like I said, there's no way we're not gonna get curbs.
Yeah.
At least twenty five grand left.
Yeah. But don't we have another couple of funds that we could just pay that out of that wouldn't even bother any of his stuff? Don't we have a couple of line items that?
No, we don't.
Is that forty three hundred just a one time fee or is there like a?
Well, I understand that's a one time fee. They're gonna come install the cameras.
Rainy day and.
And all that, and then it's got a five year.
That's all, that's all just built. I paid for everything on this building on rainy day.
But your questions still okay with that?
I still got work up my ass.
The way I understood it, that was a one time fee.
I'm just trying to make sure that we don't.
I might be, I might, thinking back now, I may be able to pull that out of either rainy day or the riverboat. Because we did, when we were going for this building, since we were under budget.
That's what I'm thinking.
Let me, we can do it. I I'll have to go to Chickwich Fund. We'll have the money left over, but we'll just do a resolution that will move it from a capital asset. Because these are under, that's under five thousand. So I have to move it to a supply line. So I would just give you guys a resolution just to move it to a supply line.
And then that wouldn't touch any of his stuff?
No, you're right. So I'll go back when I'm back at the office.
Did you guys hear what we were talking about? I'm sorry, is everybody? Just, just to try and not touch Matt's stuff, if we've got some other, you know, like, that's why I was asking Melissa, we've got a couple of line items that I think we could pull that from and not bother his stuff. And especially in some line items that we're trying to close out anyway. Like the rainy day that that's never going to get refunded. That would just be able to, we'd be able to just get closer to zeroing that out.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's, let's at least look at that.
I'll look at either rainy day or riverboat, what we have left over from what we allotted for the purchase of this building.
You guys good with that?
Yeah.
Matt, good?
Yes.
So if you guys wanna go ahead and approve the agreement.
I think we can.
Then we can get going on that.
I do have a question about the cameras in here. Are we getting cameras here?
Yes, we are.
Should we see if these companies will add that in so we can go with the same company?
I'm going through C E I out of Connersville. They're already here. I've already talked to them. They are waiting until we're in here so that we can address where we want our cameras. Because they were waiting for the internet to get installed. That just got installed about a week, about a week ago. And of course, I was on vacation.
Anybody that quoted Matt?
Yeah, C E I was one of the companies. They were, they would have been our second.
They're about two thousand.
They're about two thousand dollars higher for me down at the garage.
Did they know and did they know that they had also quoted this up here?
They've not quoted it yet.
I don't know that they've quoted. I don't know.
They've not quoted it yet, because they told me to wait till I got my internet.
I didn't know.
So so based on that, I think, I think Derek has a good idea that we need to let them, you know, maybe if, you know, they wanna quote.
You can't really do that again because it's it's somewhat collusion. It's borderline.
Oh, because he's already got quotes from everybody?
Yeah.
Ah.
Yeah.
I missed that. Okay, okay.
I'm sorry. I guess I didn't know that's what was gonna happen up here or I would have.
No, it's.
I just, we talked about cameras and I just knew I had to get three prices, so.
No, that's, that's, I mean, we could still go with them if we needed to. I mean, depending on what they're, but.
But then you have to defend your.
The reason for going with the two thousand dollars higher.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I would just like to use the same company throughout the whole town, but I don't think it's worth.
But see, I'm also, but I'm using Robinson's for the communications here, for the phone system. So they're, you know, they will be doing our phone systems, because I went with them because of, I have to have contact with the dispatchers. They are, they actually provide the phones to the police department already.
Yeah.
So we went ahead and are doing ours off that because then, for instance, during the day, we could take phone calls from the police department and send them to them, to their voiceless. Because we do get a lot of calls for them. They don't, people don't think about calling the dispatchers. Now, after four o'clock, the phones will automatically transfer to the dispatchers for answering or during the weekends. But during the day that we're here, we will serve as their quote unquote, the receptionist. So Robinson's will be here, C E I will be here, either way, so.
Right, I'm just saying, I think it would be a good idea if we had all of our video monitoring on one system. But I don't know if it's worth an extra two thousand dollars to do that.
Right.
And then you can just pull on the monitor and you see all the town.
But again, you know, like you said, that's an extra two thousand dollars that, yeah.
Either way, I'm gonna be paying both of them anyway.
Yeah. Okay, so what do we need? Do we need to approve one of those?
Yes, you need, yeah, unless you're gonna table.
Yeah, I don't see any reason to unless you guys. Yes, no, difference. Okay. So again, Matt, could you, what was the, the prices again?
Robinson Communication is four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars, fifty one cents. C E I was six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And Corson was nine thousand eight hundred and ninety eight dollars and eighty five cents.
So we would leave this up to the board to make a motion on approving a vendor based on the numbers we would just provided.
Make a motion to approve Robinson at forty three sixteen fifty one. This is low bid.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
I'll just wait, most of the here for me. Is it okay or do you want me to wait until I hear from you? As far as money wise, or can I go ahead and call him?
No, you ain't gonna have a problem. We just have to do a transfer and that's kind of already transferred, so that's.
We gotta approve. We just gotta figure, we just gotta decide where to pull it from. House Bill fourteen fifty nine.
Oh, that's Matt's.
Oh, that, sorry.
Yeah, guys, I just, so I wanted to make you aware of this. I did get this through the other day in an email from the Indiana Utility Regular Commission, which we have to put together an asset management plan. Because what's happened is this House Bill fourteen fifty nine has went into play. If you look at it, it states that any water or wastewater utility has to have a detailed report to them every four years. And if you look at it all the way through, the asset management plan, we talked about kind of before, like a couple of years ago. But if we don't put this together, we don't follow what they want, we lose our quote unquote, like our availability to go to Baker Tilly and to Unball and set our rates. The Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission will come in and say, no, you're gonna charge this or you're gonna charge this. They will take over telling us what we will charge for water and wastewater. So I kind of put two different copies though. I put the House Bill that was in there. And then Alliance of Indiana Rural Water gave us one. It was kind of broke down. They kind of explained it a little more to me in layman's terms that they've been sending out. One other thing I wanna make sure on that that you guys understand is with that whole deal on that House Bill, there is board and council training that you guys will have to do and the regulatory is gonna make it that way or will be in violation. And that's gonna be effective in January of twenty twenty seven. They haven't really yet said whether you're gonna have to go somewhere and do, they're not said how many hours you'll have to do. I know I did talk to in a class the other day I had. They're talking about where they're gonna possibly do it in-house. Where they might come and say, okay, we'll come to your guys' board meeting. Or we know you're gonna have a board meeting on Tuesday night. We might have you come in at four o'clock for the meeting. Do your training from four to six. Get your couple of hours in. They might have to do that a couple of times. They haven't really stated totally what has to be done on the training part. As far as the asset management plan, we have to have something working on and in place by twenty twenty six, by the end of twenty twenty six.
So the stuff we're already doing is not enough to satisfy them?
No, no, this is a new House Bill that they come out with, so.
So what is it that they're, when they say asset management, what do they?
Well, they're, what it's basically doing is they're breaking it down. They want years, makes, models. They want all the pipes, all the pumps, all the when those lines were installed, when the lines are gonna be replaced, what's our plan to put those lines in, change those lines out. So, you know, like you take the lines coming in from the water tower or from the water plant, you know, being in fifty eight, we would need to set up a plan and say, okay, we're gonna replace this many sections of pipe or this many feet of pipe in a certain amount of years. And you have to lay this out. So I contact, well, I contacted Westwood just to talk to Adam a little bit because we talked before. And, you know, you can get different areas of where to go with. If we get the bare bones type stuff of what we're looking at just to get us by with the regulatory and all that, he's telling me, and and this is all just strictly off the top of his head. He's telling me between twenty and thirty thousand dollars to get a management plan put up. If we do a full blown, create the most complete document that we could complete all the way out, everything, he's saying we could get upwards around fifty to sixty thousand dollars. You know, I don't know, because it just got thrown at me, so I don't, I don't know a lot about it. I'm still trying to read up and up on Keith to find out more. But it's one of those things I think we need to try to stay as on top of it as much because I'd rather not have somebody else telling us what we're gonna set our rates at when they want and not have that option.
Yeah.
So.
And 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 with that, if we, if we had a complete plan, yes, it's gonna be expensive. But, you know, if that's something that we can decide that we can afford.
Yes.
I I think that, you know, if we look down the road to our successors, I think we would be benefiting people that sat in this chair five, ten years after us. And we kind of set the pace for them so that, you know.
So when we did the capital asset group that we did two years ago, I I work off that and I have to work off that for our annual financial report. So when the Dahl Consulting Group helped us, they had to do a lot of what I would call guest factor. Because we could not locate a lot of information that we were needing. is we could not locate a lot of information that we were needing, such as, you know, when we're certain pump spot. It's primarily more with the water and sewer part of this than it is everything else, that the, what I would call.
Those hidden things.
The hidden things, so, um, so we still do some capital asset management part with the utilities, cause like I said, I have to do it, um, I'm required to, but this is gonna be a little intense, this will be more like bolts and nuts type stuff, and they're gonna be required, and then we'll end up probably integrating it in with, with the other as well.
But I, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention, because it is something we're gonna have to keep going on top of, and I, and I want to make sure that you guys knew, you know, like the part of that's gonna be the training and all the other stuff that's gonna go along with this.
We need to, you know, but this is one of those things, it's a huge project, just like any of the projects we're gonna take, we, we need to act on it pretty soon and not kick this can down the road, and three months before them saying, this is your drop-down, drop-dead deadline, and then we go, oh crap, we're, we're way behind the eight ball here, so, yeah, I think we need to, so, you know, whatever research you can come up with.
Okay.
Keep, keep us.
Yes.
Going forward, don't.
Cause I've been talking with other superintents, I was talking with Workfields the other day a little bit, I've talked with Centerwheels, we're all in the same boat.
Yeah.
We're all trying to figure out what we're gonna do and what, you know, because not, not everybody's got that kind of money to set a plan right away. We've all said, I will wait till later, well, now we're gonna have to do it.
Right.
So we don't have a choice.
And moving forward, that'll give us a chance to, we start planning a budget of how we're gonna pay for all of this, so, again, where we can save a dime, we, we may need to.
Yep.
The, the fees that you were talking about, the low end and the high end.
Uh-huh.
Is that to set up the plan?
That, that's to make our, yeah, they would, so basically the, with the, the engineer would put the, the asset management plan together for us. They would basically be doing all the legwork, they would put it all together and say, here Towne Liberty, here is your asset management plan, then we'd have that, cause even if we try, I couldn't do it, I, I'm just, there's no way, we're still gonna have to have that stamp of an engineer to go to the regulatory, so, it, it's almost a head to let them do all the research, let them throw it together, because they probably got a template on their computer that they've done it already, so, you know, they can start putting all that together that way.
Hopefully it's a big expense upfront and it just gets updated.
Right, and then we just update it as we go, so once we see that we're gonna replace, you know, fifteen hundred foot of line, we can go through across that off and say, okay, we're done there, now, here's our next step that we're gonna be moving towards, and we'll, you know, you just keep, you know, deleting out what you fit.
Right, yeah. Okay, thanks Matt, yeah, just, just stay on us please.
Yep.
The next item is adjustment request for Tammy Richardson, and I think Ross, you, you wanted to speak on that.
Yeah, uh, I went to school with her also, she's my neighbor, but I've known her my whole life. Uh, she contacted me last week, her mother is, um, very ill, and for her to attend the meeting in, in person, she would have to get some type of adult, uh, care babysitter, and ask if I would present this on her behalf and bring it to the board. And looking at it, it's pretty cut and dry, it's about a three-day leak, she hired, uh, a local contractor, got it repaired. I think it meets the criteria, I make a recommendation that we allow the, uh, the allowance.
Yeah.
So you put that in the form of a motion there, Ross?
Make a motion that we allow the, uh, what was it, ninety?
Ninety-four twelve.
Or twelve.
Twelve adjustment.
Adjustment.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, guys, um, the other, uh, business is, uh, as always in our pocket, we've got the bank reconciliations, you've had a chance to look at that, look at the numbers, compare the numbers. There's no comments or questions on that, we just need a motion on that as well.
Documents we were presented match up, I make a recommenda- make a motion that we approve.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So. Oh, yeah, you did, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm, I think I'm Tammy's adjustment, I just.
What?
Oh, you know what, I think I lost it.
I'll have to stock down tomorrow, won't I, gonna have to come see you at my lunch.
Oh, you don't have to do it though. Oh, no, there they are. There's so much paperwork in there today.
Okay, um, Melissa's gonna kind of give us an update on the blood, sweat, tears that she has put forward, uh, in the building down here.
Okay, so we're looking, uh, the plan is, um, that, we are gonna close the office to the public starting September ninth, we will be closed September ninth and the tenth, because, um, once Becky can, uh, finishes the pu- deposit on September ninth, all the computers and such are gonna be moved down here. We have some of this coming on the tenth to start, uh, doing all the networking, so I have to have all the computers here. So we will be receiving payments still through the internet, we will still be receiving payments through the depository there, and we'll open it up here, so people can start here. So I'm hoping that these, those two days without people dealing with the public, we can get in here, get, start getting things unpacked. I've already started movements, so you guys can look around if you want, seeing what's been moved already, but now it's to the point of just getting to the, the nitty-gritty of getting things moved. I'm working with Matt, we're scheduling on when we're gonna get like all the file cabinets down here, where they're gonna go, and also the other items that need to come down with us. So, I only hope to have, hopefully have the meeting closed the ninth and the tenth. I'm hoping people will be, um, patient if we have to go another day, just depending on how all the networking of the phones, cause the phones are going in at that time as well. So, we tried to do it with as less disruption of service to the customers. But we will, and then we will be checking the phones back at the other office until we go live, you know, with people answer, you know, calling to say they need something or other, so we will be checking the phones, doing that stuff, but we need to be close to the public so we can get the stuff moved down.
Just something I was thinking about last week, and I don't, I don't know what everybody's opinion is, but once you guys get down here, you know, once everybody's moved and everything's done, I, I would like for us to organize some kind of open house, uh, for the public. People come in, you know, I don't know how, you know, don't know what the logistics would be, but, you know, people could walk around and see our offices and see, see, see what they've paid for, see what we've done, I don't know, what, what do you guys think about that, I mean?
It should be.
Melissa, was that September or October, ninth and tenth?
It's next week.
Okay.
So, I'd like, kind of like to maybe, maybe you can work out some kind of something, but I don't, I don't know what it is, but it'd be kind of nice, whether it's, you know, I don't know.
And there's some little work that's gonna need to be done after we're in here, like I'm putting carpet, I'm actually putting carpet down once we get in here, um.
Yeah, I'd like for it to be done.
So I'm, I'm saying probably, maybe the first December, December, we can have it like holiday, holiday and festive and all that, so maybe once December first, Todd has done an incredible job on his offices down there, him and, um, Carl and, um, Carl's, um, girlfriend have been painting and stuff like that, they did an accent wall, they've done a lot of moving. Um, Matt's group has helped immensely with assembling and just helping move stuff in, so, um, it's, and then my girls have been down here when they can and helping paint and clean, try to keep the building clean as we're going, so, it's been a full-on, um,
Job?
Process, but I'm happy with it, and I'm, I'm hoping the community will be as well as soon as it.
Yeah, I think they will be, and I, that's why I think, you know, they, they should be able to, to come in and see what, what, what you guys have done, and you know, the, the forward progress that this board has made, the departments have made, and, you know, just, we don't, we don't sit on our hands around here, we, we keep things moving, so. Anybody have anything else?
Quick question, on those key vops for the building, for the exterior doors, if the electric is out.
They still work.
They still work.
They have a battery backup.
Okay.
And then also we will ha- we do have a full working generator here.
So we've got it going?
Well, Matt's gonna.
I'm working in the process of getting a new generator down here to get rid of the one, well, get a price on it, of what'll be about putting a new one in instead of the, the per-payment. The sales rep, they had a change in, uh, sales reps down there, he's not there with them anymore, so, uh, he's doing his training.
And then we also, I like, I have a key to the building, I have a hard key to the building, I'm gonna be giving, um, Matt's probably gonna get one, and then I'll give Todd one too, so that if, if ever.
Yeah, and that's.
We don't have access, one of us three will have the keys to the building.
They usually have a battery in them that'll last anywhere from twenty-four to forty-eight hours, maybe even longer, that you can still swipe if there's no, uh, she wouldn't be able to come in and do any kind of updates to the keys if the system's down, but you can still get in or out, and like Melissa said, there's still gonna be some hard keys that are out there, they're just, you know, few and far between, but we don't need those out there running around, so.
Yep.
There's always a way to get access to the building. Okay, space and bills.
Derek, you wanna get that list for me, or you gonna get Melissa then on the trees?
I'll give it to one of you, that's fine, I'll, I'll write it up better.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm just making sure so I know where I'm.
Right now it's picking its scratches.
Okay.
You won't be able to follow it.
I'll do the same, Matt.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
I'll just take it down to Melissa's office tomorrow.
Yeah, if you can drop them off and then that way and get, I'll be off this week, but then I'll get working on them next week and probably get things rolling with.
If anybody wants to take a quick tour of the building to see what it looks like, and the work that's been done, you're welcome to after the meeting.
I do, cause I don't believe Todd did a good job.
You, you've, you've gone from needing a high chair from Ross to Derek saying that you could do it, must be.
Hey, you are just got that sticker on your head that says, beat me up tonight, kick me, kick me, yeah.
That's the worst I have, I'm gonna be on that.
You can take it.
Yeah.
All right, guys, I need a motion to adjourn.
Swing motion.
Got Ross, and I need a second, use a second, Derek.
Derek, all in favor?
All right, we're out, thank you, guys.